I would like to call this village board meeting of Thursday, April 20, 2023, to order. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Coker?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Here.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Here.
Trustee Light?
Here.
Trustee Maritano?
Yeah.
Trustee Pojak?
Here.
Trustee Schroeder?
Here.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the public for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A public hearing by the mayor and board of trustees for the purpose of receiving oral and written comments from public concerning the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2023, and ending April 30th, 2024. Is there anyone from public that wants to comment? This public hearing is now open. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment regarding the annual appropriation ordinance for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2023, and ending April 30th, 2024?
I have a quick question. Is this something which the board later is going to discuss about the, like, what, you know, about this budget?
That was last week.
Last week, but that was a special, but, you know, what we, if we don't agree with something, because we didn't get a chance to, and we didn't go, there are some, some stuff which I want to address. So where, where we are going to address them?
Well, I imagine, I suppose we could probably bring it up now, but we had that special meeting last week.
To get this ordinance prepared.
Yeah, but we never discussed about the hiring of these deputy directors in all the department. It was never brought up in that.
Please stop, you know, any from, from public? None? This public hearing is closed, you know?
So the, the board was presented information in advance on?
Mr. Flint, we can talk later about that. We have time for that.
I am just asking a question, because that was never been brought, and I have some concerns about that, and so do the other board members. So when we are going to discuss that, that's a simple question. Why is getting so mad on that?
I, I don't know, but that was the purpose of the board meeting last week was to discuss the budget.
It was never been brought up. That subject was never been brought up on that. And that's what I am talking about. It doesn't come up, and it just passed, and no one knows what happened.
So there was documents presented to the board with that information in it?
Mm-hmm.
We didn't go line by line through the budget?
But also, it was never been even discussed, and those are very important facts, and, and those are the important points. And I think with me, there are some other board members also which are concerned about that, and we want to discuss that. So either, like, if you are saying that I'm going to say yes to this, no, I'm not saying yes to that.
Okay. It would be either remove it from the appropriation ordinance from the, from the agenda, which I would not recommend, or voting no against it if you do not approve of it.
The board was given the board book about 10 days in advance. There was documents written outlining the updates and changes that was given to the board. We had a meeting last week.
Was never, I, I mean, maybe I'm new to this or whatever, but that was never been discussed. Those are the things which needs to be discussed. And why not in publicly? Because that's the public's money, and they need to know where their money is going. So why not we discuss? Maybe it should comes into the board, and then the board should say yes or no, because later on, we are the one who takes the blame from the public. Hey, where is our money is going? Because that thing was never been discussed in the public. That was never been discussed. Okay, whatever you call it, the last, it was like hardly a half-hour meeting. So I need to discuss that, and I'm just asking, how can I do that? I think it's not too late for that, because I'm still seeing this is now coming to the board.
It would be, I mean, it was a public meeting. Is, is it on a, it's not on the consent, right?
So.
So it's, it's on new business, there's a motion to waive first reading. You don't have to waive first reading. I would recommend that you do, but you could open up for discussion. It's a discussion item.
Yes, that's what I want.
So once, once there's a first to it, it would be discussion, or second, and then there would be a discussion.
Okay.
And then you guys could decide as a board what to do.
Doug?
I want to interrupt, interrupt down that. I missed that meeting, you know that. There's some details. I was looking through the manual. I don't understand some of that stuff in there, so.
Okay.
We're going to bring it up, I'd appreciate it.
Go ahead.
If it don't take too much time.
Sure, no? Okay. We now move on to community announcement.
Excuse me, we need a motion to close the public hearing.
Yeah, I did already.
No, we did not.
This public hearing is closed.
No, we need a motion to close it.
Motion? Okay. I need motion to close. Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
Discussion? None? Role call, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritano?
Yes.
Trustee Pojak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
We now move on to community announcement. Trustee Schmidt, please.
The next coffee and chat with the village president and board will be on Saturday, May 6th, at the Center for Senior Citizens from 10:00 a.m. to noon. If you are unable to attend and have any comments and suggestions or questions for the village president or village board, please call the village president's office anytime at 630-909-5302. Arbor Day is a nationally celebrated observance that encourages tree planting and care. Founded by J. Sterling Morton in 1872, it is celebrated each year on the last Friday in April to coincide with the best tree planting times. This year, Illinois observes Arbor Day on Friday, April 28th. The village will be working with various community groups to plant new trees throughout the community in honor of Arbor Day. If you have any questions regarding tree planting and care, please call 630-260-6060. Thank you.
You're welcome. Our trustee Siddiqui.
Now that spring is here, the village of Glendale Heights would like to remind residents that many projects in and around the house may require a permit. Common projects needing a permit include work on decks, sheds, patios, residing of your house, and re-roofing. For a complete list of projects requiring a permit, please visit www.glandalehighes.org/commdev/buildingpermits. We would also like to remind you not to pay your contractor until they contact Community Development to ensure all work is up to code. If you are not sure, if your project requires a permit, or if you need to apply for one, please contact the Community Development Department at 630-260-6030.
Trustee Light?
Thank you. The Glendale Heights Police Department is partnering with Hyundai to provide free steering wheel locks to Glendale Heights residents in response to the increased theft rate of certain Hyundai vehicles. Glendale Heights residents with valid stickers who own eligible Hyundai vehicles can pick up a free steering wheel lock from the Glendale Heights Police Department. In order to receive a free steering wheel lock, you must provide a valid ID and registration for the following types of vehicles: a 2015 to 2021 Hyundai Accent, Elantra, Kona, Santa Fe, Sonata, or Tucson; or a 2015 to 2018 Hyundai Veloster. For more information, please contact Tanya Maco at 630-909-5459. Thank you.
You're welcome. Clerk Schmidt, please.
The village of Glendale Heights is now hiring for a number of seasonal positions at Glendale Heights Golf Club, GH2O Aquatic Center, Public Works, and the Leisure Services Department. Positions range from laborers to lifeguards, to youth program counselors, and many more. Gain valuable experience and make friends that will last a lifetime working for the village of Glendale Heights. For more information, please visit or contact Human Resources at 630-909-5357.
Trustee Maritano, please.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
During the months of April and May, parking restrictions will be in fact from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. due to street sweeping. Color-coded no-parking signs are posted in four different zones throughout the village. Street parking is not allowed on Monday for the red zone, Tuesday for the blue zone, Wednesday for the green zone, and Friday for the brown zone. To find out your zone, visit the village website. For any questions on street sweeping program, please contact Public Works at 630-260-6040. Stop, stop by, stop by the Center for Senior Citizens on Tuesday, April 25th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. for Super Senior Mobile Unit. This program offers driver license renewal, rules of the road classroom instructions, and a vision, a vision screening exam. If you are age 65 or better, you may take, you may obtain a free, non-expiring state-of-Illinois photo ID card. Drivers age 75 and better are required to take a driving test to renew their driver license and must visit the Secretary of State's Driver Service Facility. For more information, please contact the Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050. Thank you.
You're welcome. Trustee Pojak, please.
Do you have unwanted old cell phones, retired U.S. flags, batteries, bikes, and other recyclables? Drop them off at the One Stop Reuse and Recycling Depot on Saturday, April 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to noon. All items can be dropped off at the GH2O Aquatic Center, parking lot located at 240 Civic Center Plaza. Items not acceptable include hazardous waste, large appliances, and CFL bulbs. Document shredding will also be available at the event with a limit of four boxes per vehicle. For more information or a complete list of acceptable items, visit www.glandalehighes.org or call 630-260-6000.
Trustee Schroeder, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Senior citizens aged 65 or better are encouraged to apply for the Senior Citizens Utility Tax Rebate Program. Qualifying applicants will receive a $75 rebate check as part of this program if they meet the following guidelines: If you're age 65 or better, honored before December 31st, 2022, or you have a spouse who is age 65; if you have lived in Glendale Heights for all of 2022 as either an owner or a renter; if you have earned no more than $45,000 of gross income during 2022; and have utilities billed and paid in their name. Applications are being accepted now through April 30th. If you have any questions, please contact the Center for Senior Citizens at 630-260-6050 or the Finance Department at 630-260-6000. Thank you, Mayor.
Mary, just for seniors?
Yeah.
I'm not senior.
All right.
Okay. We have the following proclamation: A proclamation to proclaim April 22nd, 2023 as Earth Day. Number three, did I skip some? No. A proclamation to proclaim April 28th, 2023 as Arbor Day. Number four, a proclamation to proclaim the week of April 30th, May 6th, 2023 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Number five, a proclamation to proclaim May 1st, 2023 as Global Love Day. If there's no objections, I will sign these proclamation. Any objection? So it's Love Day, you know? Okay, I will. Next. Today, we will be introducing three of our newest police officers. After the introduction, we will recess momentarily to allow our far pictures and cutting of cake in hallway outside. Chief Pappas, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Village Board, for this opportunity. I'd like to introduce three individuals who were recently sworn in as police depart, as police officers at our police department.
I need motion to recess, you know, for that. No, no. After, after this.
Part of the meeting.
Sorry, my apologies.
All three officers have a connection to our community and believe in our community policing and problem-solving mission. They will be attending the Southwest Illinois College Academy, SWIC, beginning May 2nd, which is in Belleville. The first officer is Patrick Semekki. He was born in Poland. He speaks Polish fluently. He grew up with one of our officers, and he wanted to be part of our police department because of our community interaction and the reputation our department has. Patrick's badge number is 3026. Next, we have Marco Lolmi Bell. Did I do that right? Marco grew up in town. He went to St. Matthews for school. Marco also served in the United States Navy for seven years. Marco is passionate about serving the town he grew up in. He told me when he was sworn in, it was one of the best days of his life. Marco is badge number 3027. And finally, we have Orelli Guzman. Orelli came to our police department by way of the Citizen Police Academy. From there, she was hired on as a community service officer. And three years later, she was sworn in as a police officer. She is fluent in Spanish, and her badge number is 3028. We are proud to have all three of these officers join our police force. They're all part of our family now. They are all here to serve our community in a community-oriented fashion, and they're a perfect fit for our department mission. Before we break for cake, I want to announce that we are going to start recruiting officers for our June 3rd police test. We're looking for officers from our community who care and represent our community. Advertisement for the testing and the requirements will be coming out next week. We're looking for officers just like these three. So with that said, can we please take a recess for cake and so our officers can meet those in attendance?
Is there motion to recess?
Motion to recess.
Second.
Trustee Schmidt?
Second.
And Trustee Light?
Second.
You can just do a voice vote if you want. All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Motion carried.
Congratulations, yes.
I would like to call this village board meeting back to order. We go on to public discussion of agenda items. If there are anyone in the public that would like to address this board?
Good evening. My name is Michael Onaveros, Glendale Heights. I'd like to discuss under new business number nine, a motion to approve the recommendation of the Glendale Heights Ad-Hoc Cricket Evaluation Committee. I stand before you to respectfully request the village board of trustees to withdraw the current RFP and any other subsequent proposals in its entirety for cricket field utilization for 2023. A step further, cricket field use should be prohibited for the 23, 2023 season period. Before I share the reasons why, let me share a timeline as to how we got here to this point, no less. In May of 2021, just one month after the election, village president Kokar spoke with director Keith Knotts, our village administrator Mike Marin, and stated he wanted to go in a different direction regarding the cricket fields. Mr. Knotts, remember that conversation?
I'm sorry?
You want to remember that conversation?
I do.
Village president Kokar.
You cannot ask questioning.
I'm proceeding, please.
Yeah.
I'm moving on, thank you. Village president Kokar met with Mr. Sandup Meta on or around August 19th, 2021, to discuss taking over the fields and creating a new cricket league, the Midwest Cricket Club, to be exact. Since then, village president Kokar had numerous meetings with Mr. Meta and his associates. On or around November 5th, 2021, village president Kokar's assistant emailed Director Knotts to follow up on a letter of termination for the cricket grounds and said, "Please have these documents ready as soon as possible." On November 10th, 2021, the village attorney sent the termination notice to Mr. Body at American Cricket Conference. On or around November 16th, 2021, village president Kokar met with Mr. Meta about the cricket grounds. Sometime that day, the village president's secretary called Mr. Knotts to obtain the American Cricket Conference agreement in a Word format. Later that afternoon, Mr. Knotts was called back to a meeting with village president Kokar and Mr. Meta for Mr. Meta to give Mr. Knotts a check for use of the cricket grounds. But Mr. Knotts refused, because there was no signed agreement, and the amount exceeded $10,000. The meeting ended with the village president Kokar telling Mr. Knotts not to tell anyone about this particular meeting. On or around November 17th, 2021, village president Kokar signed a usage agreement with Midwest Cricket Club. The agreement provided a gross payment due to the village of $29,000. Village president Kokar accepted the payment, and it was deposited into the village accounts. On November 22nd, 2021, the village board of trustees rejected the Midwest Cricket Club contract that had been signed by village president Kokar, and the monies that MCC had paid were refunded back to MCC. Because of the delay caused by the MCC contract and the concern there was now insufficient time to seek RFPs, and because of ACC's experience, the village board of trustees decided to pursue renegotiation of the usage agreement with ACC for 2022. On January 6th of 2022, the village board of trustees passed ordinance 2022-01 authorizing a usage agreement for the cricket grounds, grounds, I should say, with ACC for 2022. So here we are on Thursday, April 20th, 2023. The current RFP for 2023 is merely smoke and mirrors. The decision to award the fields to Midwest Cricket Conference was already decided by the village president, not the village board of trustees. Village president Kokar's decision to award Glendale Heights Cricket Field to outside entities, in my opinion, is solely based on a personal vendetta against Mr. Sohal Body at the American Cricket Conference. It's not about the money. It's about his agenda while foregoing the best interests of the village and its residents. An RFP procurement process is supposed to be fair and transparent. There is bias leading to this decision, given unfair advantages to Midwest Cricket Conference, such as more time to prepare, access to insider information, preferential treatment during evaluation, manipulating the scoring of ranking of proposals, such as by changing the scores after receiving the proposals, or by ignoring or overriding the recommendations of the RFP Cricket Utilization Evaluation Committee. RFP bias can result in suboptimal outcomes, such as higher cost to the leagues, exclusion to participate in their own community. The RFP mentions safety for players and the public alike, but there are no specifics as to what safety entails. Midwest Cricket Club uses hardball. If we're talking safety, it should be banned due to concerns of injury and liability, not to mention, however, it was never included in the RFP. Mr. Body and the American Cricket Conference have provided cricket to our community, Glendale Heights, for over 20 years. Over three leagues, 40 teams per league, 800 players in all compete in our fields each year. The American Cricket Conference has maintained rates at $2,700 per year, making cricket affordable to everyone, yet that's not good enough for our village president. And why are we going through an RFP that falls short of the community's best interest? Did we do an RFP when Mr. Flint asked for $1.2 million to renovate three baseball fields? No. Did we do an RFP when Mike and Bill introduced software integration between community development and the finance department? No. The village board of trustees needs to do the right thing and pull back the RFP and any other proposals submitted. I once again urge the village board to reconsider their options, even if it means no cricket this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Onaveros. Anybody else? Please state your name and address.
Sohal Bari, Glendale Heights. For the last 22 years, we are providing cricket here in Glendale Heights. You guys never had any problem, no issues, no complaint. And suddenly, we wiped out from the Glendale Heights. You guys, the trustees assigned employees to handle this cricket thing, these employees does not have any connection with the residents. They just here to get their paycheck, and some people even getting two paychecks from the residents. But they don't do any consideration when it comes to assigning the cricket field. They give a first preference to somebody else who does not even live. They give second preference who does not live here. And they dictate, "This is for you, 30,000 days, 1,500 days." No option. They think, "I came in the ship. I came in the airplane as a free man." So I urge you all the trustees to do the right things and take care of the residents. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
This is out of the agenda, right? Is this committee in the hold?
Doug, are we normally going to do what we historically do? Because there's no committee in the hold.
At the end?
At the end, okay. There'll be a, a period at the end of this agenda for any public comments, okay?
So none? You have the consent agenda before you vote, acting village administrator, Doug Flint. Please read the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
One, approval of regular board meeting minutes of April 6th, 2023. Two, approval of the committee hold meeting minutes, April 6th, 2023. Three, approval of special board meeting minutes, April 11th, 2023. Four, approval of the accounts payable listing of April 20th, 2023, in the amount of $4,156,820.35. Five, an ordinance to waive bid, accept the proposal, and authorize the execution of a subscription agreement with Granciaus for the GovQA software. Six, a resolution to accept the proposal of Bloomingdale Bank and Trust and authorize the execution of a banking services contract between Bloomingdale Bank and Trust and the village of Glendale Heights. Seven, resolution to authorize the execution of agreement for professional engineering services for the wastewater treatment plant phosphorus removal upgrade project for the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois. Eight, resolution to approve and ratify the execution of the amended notice of award and amended contract with J. Congdon Sewer Service Incorporated for the Norton Avenue and East Schubert Avenue Water Main Replacement Project. Nine, a resolution to approve and authorize the execution of a change order to the agreement between the village of Glendale Heights, Illinois, and Christopher B. Burke Engineering for the furnishing and professional design engineering services for the 2023 street project. Ten, resolution authorizing the execution of agreement for the 2023 Glendale Heights Fest fireworks display by and between RKM Fireworks Company and the village of Glendale Heights. Eleven, resolution to approve the execution of a side letter agreement to the village of Glendale Heights current collective bargaining agreements. Twelve, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a notice of award and authorizing the execution of a contract with AVI Systems, Inc. for the furnishing, delivery, and installation of council chambers, boardroom, video upgrades. Thirteen, resolution authorizing the execution of a producer entertainment agreement for Glendale Heights Fest 2023 for Glendale Heights Fest twenty twenty-three by and between Ron Lemon DBA Quality Concerts and the village of Glendale Heights. Fourteen, a resolution authorizing execution of a video screen equipment agreement for the Glendale Heights Fest twenty twenty-three by and between Ron Lemon DBA Quality Concerts and the village of Glendale Heights. Fifteen, approval of consent items.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Everybody's, who's first, you know? Trustee Light.
So moved.
I will take one from, uh, trustee's orders. Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiki?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes, I was all excited.
Okay. Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved. Old business, none. New business, one. A motion to waive first reading on new business item two to six. Is there a motion to waive first reading on new business item two to six? Motion. Who's that first? Trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Schmidt?
So trustee Siddiki, do you want to move?
Yeah.
You want to move two to-
To the discussion.
Not waive first reading?
Yes. Mm-hmm. So-
Well, we're not going to discuss it then, if you wish to discuss it.
That's true.
Yeah, so we don't want to waive the first reading, correct?
Well, if you want to discuss it, you have to waive the first reading.
Yes, so that's what I want.
Yeah.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiki?
Wait, what's the motion?
We got to waive first reading first before we go to the-
Yeah, it has been waived.
Yeah, that's what, I think that's what we're voting on now. That's what we're voting on now.
To waive the first reading.
Two through six.
Okay.
Two through six.
Two through six. So if I waive, we waive, then we aren't be able to discuss number two?
If somebody makes a motion regarding it, yes. And then, it doesn't mean you have to approve it, but if we get it on the table to talk about, correct? So you have, you have items you want to, you want to discuss.
Yes.
So if somebody makes a motion to approve a second, and then discussion, doesn't mean you have to, it has to go forward. Somebody can make a motion to table whatever somebody wants to do after your discussion.
Okay.
So now would be a roll call vote for the motion to waive.
Trustee Siddiki?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to waive first reading on new business item two to six is approved. Number two, an ordinance to approve and authorize the annual appropriation ordinance of the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, request to waive first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven? Uh, trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Light?
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, yes, so what I want to discuss is about the deputy director positions which we are creating. And I believe, I'm not in favor of those because that's an extra burden on the taxpayers, and so does some of my fellow trustees are also. And that's what we want to discuss, that why we are creating this. If we need a workforce, we should just hire the person, like Office Tech or something. Why this extra burden on taxpayers? So that's what I want to discuss, and that's because in, I think in every other, there are four or five departments, I believe, in which we will be getting these deputy director positions.
No. So I met with you on April seventh to discuss all these issues and personnel changes. We are working towards, and it's not in every department. Police Department's got two deputy chiefs, Finance Department's got assistant finance director. The Public Works Department used to have a deputy director. That position's been vacant for seven, eight years. The Community Development Department does not have a deputy director. We need to have continuity of operations in case a director leaves, in case a director falls ill, in case a director decides tomorrow they don't want to be here. Right now, in those two departments, you don't have that. Finance Department, you have it, Police Department, you have it. We don't have continuity of operations within Public Works, which is the second biggest division within the village. And quite honestly, you know, you can argue one of the most important divisions within the village when it comes to public, to infrastructure and water treatment and all of that. Without a deputy director position in place, we don't have continuity of operations. We haven't had one for that, for as many, seven years, six years, however long it's been. The position is needed.
So how are we running up till now, till seven years?
Not, not as efficiently, not as well as we should be.
So why we need a deputy director position? I mean, if the director is there, let's say if he or she is going on vacation, the number two, whoever is that-
There isn't a number two. That's the problem.
So manager, I mean, is there a manager?
There's, yes. So the manager then, and in the case of a most recent absence, two managers filled in during a time, which didn't, which leaves no continuity of operations, and it leaves the two divisions that they're in charge of with nobody really in charge of them because they're overseeing that. What's also lost is the training. Right now, directors spend a third of their time on personnel issues. They should be used on future forecasting of the, of their department. They should be working on grants. They should be working on other things that a line-level deputy person should be doing. Right now, they're not doing that. They're not working on mentoring, they're not working on making the managers better because there's not opportunity to do that during the day because they have their own duties to do on top of trying to reach to the future for their departments and divisions. Public Works Department is managing this year close to a twenty million dollar budget with grants, with projects, with infrastructure. And honestly, it's too much for one person and three managers. It's a twenty million dollar budget for all the streets, for all the infrastructure going on at the water treatment plant, for sidewalk redevelopment. Public Works Department, or I'm sorry, Community Development Department is working on restructuring to provide, to meet the needs of the residents from the community survey, to provide more efficiency of personnel, to provide better and faster permitting, to provide better and faster review of plans. And you can't do that if you don't have people. You said in, in your opening comment, "Why don't we just hire the people?" Well, that's what we're doing. We're hiring the people to meet the needs the residents have asked for in the community survey, but to also meet the needs of the departments to keep the processes moving and not work in stagnation because that's what we've been doing for the last six or seven years. We've been working in just getting by. And we need to start moving processes forward, and we can't do that without succession planning and without people in second in command that are designated second in commands to work on the, the personnel issues and work. For example, today, as we know, we're short in administration by two people. I spent the day-to-day rewriting job descriptions. Right? That the HR manager should be doing or somebody else should be doing. But I spent the day rewriting job descriptions because we have new jobs going out, and we're updating job descriptions. The deputy director, or the directors of those are also doing that. And they should be focused on, on mentoring, on training, on policy, and moving the department forward, and that's been missing for every department doesn't have a deputy director. The Police Department has three deputy directors, if you count their commander. They have two deputy chiefs and a commander. Public Works Department has a director and three managers. ComDev has a director, a- assistant, two, and that's it. And there's no other real supervisors within that department. And we're missing the opportunities to make personnel improvements. We're missing the opportunities to train. We're missing the opportunities to evaluate. We're missing the opportunities to work and make the employees better because there's not enough time in the day to do that unless we have the supervisory personnel to do that. So these changes were not made because we want to spend money. These changes were made to make the village better and to make the, the departments more successful.
I mean, I, I agree with you on that part that you need people, just like in community development. I know there's been a lot of complaints about the shortage of those inspectors, and I believe you are hiring one building inspector, which, which I totally support. But to this part, that's what I, my concerns are, and then I, I agree with you. I bet on, with you, with me and Mr. Schmidt, and that was like one or two hours, and that's too much to, to digest. And, you know, we need time, and we need to see what is best for the village. I, I cannot just decide at the same moment, "Oh, yeah, everything looks fine, go ahead." So once you gave me that, I need time, and I need to, and that, those are my concerns. And so I still think that, you know, whatever the, that department is needed, we should hire the, the person versus having a, a top-level position or, or because right now, if you have a manager and you have a director, director should be enough for, for any department. It shouldn't be deputy director and then deputy, deputy to director, th- these are-
Well, we're not that layered, right?
And, and you, and you also have to understand that we are not that, we are just thirty-four thousand residents, village. We are not that, that, you know, we need director, deputy director, and then all the, all the managerial-
I, I would suggest to you that we are, we are administrative light relative to other agencies our size.
That's just my point.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Doug, you know what? You said that we have-
Mr. Schmidt?
Directors and ma-, uh, one, one particular area has a director and three managers. I would suggest that we get our deputy director from within because rather than hire somebody brand-new from the outside as deputy director, coming in with such a, a fantastic job, and we had these people from within who are more familiar with the things that have to be done in Glendale Heights.
We agree with you.
Oh, hi, well, thank you.
Go ahead, Charleston.
Uh, Mr. Schmidt?
Doug? I, I can understand the Police Department. They run twenty-four, seven. These departments are only eight hours a day, sometimes overtime. I'd like to hire somebody within, give somebody a promotion.
We're doing, well, that's the goal.
And I, I don't want to see too many chiefs and not enough Indians. That's the problem. I think that's the head, where we're heading right now. We got to have a backup.
Yes, we agree.
Uh, I'm familiar, hire within, then get somebody from the outside as the trainee.
We're, if, if the board approves the budget tonight, we have a, um, can't think of the word. We have a, uh- A what?
A posting.
That's it. We have a posting that would go out tomorrow or Monday, and it's for an internal posting only. And we're looking to hire somebody from within-
Good.
-for that position.
Right, yes, we should be.
Trustee Schmidt?
Every company that I've worked with, worked for, has a philosophy that for top management, you have a subordinate that if the manager walks out the door and gets hit by the bus, the subordinate is immediately able to take over and run seamlessly. We don't have that in a couple of the departments here. And I think that's what Doug is pointing toward. Somebody who is trained to take over the position immediately in case something should happen to the director of that department. And that's something I think we all agree that we need. It's just appears to be a matter of whether we think it should be from the inside or the outside. And hiring from the outside versus inside produces a whole bunch of philosophical questions, and that's probably not suitable for our discussion tonight. But I, I think we do need deputy directors in most of the departments here.
Trustee Light?
Okay, my turn. Um, Doug, I remember our conversations one-on-one. The, the presentation you put together to explain it all was really pretty accurate, and I agreed with it a hundred percent because I understood what you're, what we were trying to accomplish. So, you know, kudos to you for being able to get that across to me, especially with my attention deficit disorder while I have a lot of things going on in my head at the same time. But it worked out really well, and I agree we should be doing it, taking care of it because we're not hiring someone on the outside. It was structured to bring people from within to help the departments that need to help the most. And I think it was a good move. Without taking on a, a top-dollar person, we'll take on a low-dollar person and just move someone up, so.
Anybody else? Argue them?
Yeah, I, I just want to say-
Word.
Yes. Doug is right because any place you ever work, you always have somebody in second in, in command. When that guy's not there, or she's not there, somebody can step in and take over the whole operation without a year of training and everything else. So I was always for promoting from within. So I mean, with, with that, I, I, I have no problem with it.
Anybody else? None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Siddiki?
So we are wait, um, now voting for, to pass, like, to approve this or do-
Approve appropriation ordinance.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-seven is approved. Number three, an ordinance granting a conditional use to permit an eat-in, I believe, carry-out restaurant serving alcoholic beverages for consumption on the premises for Estrella Daymar Restaurant located at nineteen ninety-five Bloomingdale Road in the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, from April sixth, twenty twenty-three, COW. Request to waive first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Trustee Siddiki?
Second.
Uh, discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiki?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight is approved. Number four, an ordinance authorizing the sale of surplus personal property owned by the village of Glendale Heights, LNI, one two thousand nine Ford F-two-fifty cab and chases with PLO. Request to waive first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine? Are in motion, uh, trustee Light?
So moved.
Trustee Pochek?
Second.
Discussion. None. Roll call vote.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiki?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-nine is approved. Number five, an ordinance waiving bid and authorizing the execution of an agreement with Trotter and Associates, INC., for the furnishing of construction services and project management for the Mill Pond Lift Station Rehabilitation. Request to waive first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty? Uh, trustee Schroeder?
So moved.
Trustee Pochek?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiki?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty is approved. Number six, an ordinance rejecting all bids for the North Avenue One INI Repairs Phase Two Project and awarding the contract to Hoyer Construction Inc., Incorporated. Request to waive first reading ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one? Trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second, trustee Light?
Second.
Uh, discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Miratato?
Yes.
Trustee Pochek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroeder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiki?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
The motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty-three dash thirty-one is approved. Number seven, a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an exclusive licenses and operating agreement between the village of Glendale Heights and Belgio Incorporated, D, I believe, B, I believe, A, Belgio, by and between, uh, catering, uh, resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash forty-two. Is there a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-three dash R dash forty-two? Uh, trustee Schmidt?
So moved.
Second. Are you second, uh, trustee, uh, Light?
Okay.
Second.
Uh, is there a motion to, okay, I got it. Discussion.
So I, I have a few things just to kind of update you on where we're at, and I have Mr. Belgio out here, Tim Belgio, who's the vice president of the company, if he'd like to come forward, so if you have any questions. But just a reminder that we want- But just a reminder that we went out for RFP in December of 2022. We received one from Belgio's, and we've spent the last month and a half working with him to come up with this exclusive license and operating agreement. Um, we're excited to be working with, um, the Belgio Company. We've actually been utilizing their food for a few weeks now due to some staffing shortages, and, um, things have been going very well. We're excited to hopefully enter into a long-term agreement with them and, um, really turn this over and let them run with the banquet services.
You didn't bring any food?
You're not, but I could.
Hey, Tim, Tim.
Yes, sir.
I had a taste of your food last week over at our golf course with that Voyage with the band, uh, the one guy playing. It was fantastic.
Thank you.
I know you, you did part, and the village did part, so.
Yes.
But your part was very, very good.
Thank you very much.
And that food tasting that we had was excellent, too.
Oh, I know, yeah.
So I just wanted to let you know, I was very happy and pleased because I love food.
We're here for you. Thank you.
No, no kidding.
I don't think there's any more discussion.
Yes, go ahead.
No, I think everybody's
I believe you are good.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Right.
Thank you.
Tim, thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Miratato.
Yes.
The motion to adopt Resolution 2023-R-42 is approved. Number eight, a motion to authorize the finance director to process accounts payable and pay requests for April 28, 2023, including contract pay requests to be ratified on May 24, 2023. Is there a motion to authorize the finance director to process accounts payable and pay requests for April 28, 2023, including contract pay requests to be ratified on May 4, 2023? Any motion, uh, Trustee Light?
So moved.
And who was here at this first, uh?
Second.
Second, Miratato. Our discussion. None. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Schroder.
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt.
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui.
Yes.
Trustee Light.
Yes.
Trustee Miratato.
Yes.
Trustee Pojek.
Yes.
The motion to adopt authorize the finance director to process accounts payable and pay requests for April 28, 2023, including contract pay requests to be ratified on May 4, 2023, is approved. Number nine, a motion to approve the recommendation of the Glendale Heights Ad hoc Cricket Evolution Committee. Any motion for that? None?
I should be pursued.
So there's no, no motion? So if there's no motion, the, the item will die?
Okay, so.
It's not approved, so.
What should I say now?
Nothing, we'll just, we'll just move on.
Yes, okay.
Anybody has any?
Uh, uh, G, public discussion of agenda items. We now go on to public discussion. There is no committee of the whole meeting tonight, so the public is invited to discuss any issue on or on the agenda. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address this board?
So now it's time to address the board on agenda items or any, any item?
Didn't you say there's, uh, there was some, didn't you say there was public?
Right now. Right now.
Now it is Tika.
That's what we're doing. Tika, you can come up and talk about anything. Mike, you gonna, oh, Tika's coming up?
Tika's going up.
Okay.
Excuse me, uh, Tika, Tika, excuse me for one second. Doug, regarding number nine, there's no motion, that means it's done?
Done for tonight.
It's done for tonight. Right.
We want it.
Okay.
Well, you mean just done for tonight? I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be on the agenda in the two weeks from now?
It means that the value, the, the recommendation of the committee was not approved, so there's basically no, no, nothing to move forward with right now. So there's no action on it? And it won't be any action unless somebody re, re-brings the motion forward? Correct.
So it won't be in the next board meeting?
Correct.
Nope.
Correct. It will not.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, go ahead.
Sorry. Now, they didn't cut into my five minutes, did it, Peter?
All right, go ahead.
Five minutes.
Thank you, thank you, Mary. Um, it's good to see you all. Congratulations on your elections, and congratulations on 2022 accomplishments. I read the Village Newsletter. Usually I kind of sort through it, but I read pretty much the whole thing, and I was pretty impressed by all you guys do and all, and all you're responsible for. So, I know there's, um, you know, disagreements and all this stuff going on. You know, actually, not just here alone, but pretty much all over the country. Americans are divided and, uh, going through a lot. So, um, I wanted the finance, so you made $3 million this past, uh, you know, year profit or, you know, excess. So that's wonderful, and I was thinking, what a great idea to lower property taxes, right? Right? So, um, thinking about that, also thinking about seniors not having to pay school taxes. Now, I know that's not your domain, but I think it would be wise for you guys to get involved with the school issues because the children are being destroyed by, you know, policies right now in our government. And, uh, it's not funny, actually, at all. But, uh, yeah, so, um, personally, I think many residents would like work on behalf of, uh, you know, eliminating, uh, prob, not, not necessarily the, uh, the, the board part, you know, the office, but the, the majority of the property tax because, you know, a lot of seniors like myself are nearly driven out of town because property taxes are tough, and I get a senior discount. But anyway, not speaking for myself. Um, so, you know, I also want to, um, school choice is another thing.
Ma'am, I, I don't mean to cut you off, but that, that's nothing that this board has authority over.
But the people that watch it, Peter, the, I'm talking to the people.
Well, then you need to, you need to speak directly to the legislatures of the state of Illinois, not, not through the village board.
Don't interrupt my time, Peter, please.
I'm not interrupting, I'm just refocusing.
Okay, then refocus my time, please. Um, so, um, also wanted to mention the police, you know. And first, actually, I want to mention the residents and the responsibility, which you guys know, I know, I've heard it in other meetings. You are representatives, not our controllers. But I see by the audience attendance that people don't get involved in politics and religion. I was raised that way. Now I'm all politics and religion, last year and a half since I've been retired. But, um, I think that residents, residents, please get involved with the local politics because that's where it begins. And if we're corrupt on the local politics, and we already are corrupt on the state politics, and we're disastrously corrupt on the national, federal level.
Ne, Tika, I don't mean to interrupt you again.
That's okay, I'm not talking to you, Peter, don't worry about it.
I know you're not talking to me, but
I'm not talking to you.
I, I'm, I'm speaking for the board.
No, I'm speaking to the board, and I'm speaking for the board, too.
Please keep your comments germane to public business, for the
It is
For the village.
This is for the village.
For the village, thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, lawyer. Um, so, uh, the police, I want to say, residents and board and everybody, they are great. One bad apple, but 99% great. And, uh, we really need to support them. I proposed a sign on the board that says, um, "The Village of Glendale Heights supports and defends our police department and fire department." I think that should be on the board, on the electric board. Now, I heard different things, but I think it should be a message to the people of Glendale Heights to treat the police with respect. They should not be dealing, because if we lose the police, or they are so disheartened, and they're quitting in droves all over the country. And I'm sure you've got your hands full, George, on a lot of fronts, including schools, you know, because a lot's going on there, from what I understand. But, uh, so, I think that's all I have, believe it or not. God bless you all.
Thank you, Tika.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Hi, Mike Somerville, Glendale Heights. Again, I want to invite you, you got an invitation to our groundbreaking on, uh, April 29th at, uh, 10 o'clock. We're going to, uh, be breaking the ground for our new addition to our administration building and everything. And Chester, I want to tell you that we're not going to raise taxes.
I believe you, Mike. I know you too, too well.
And, and again, if, I'm offering this service to the board. If you would like, I will have our superintendent come here and give you a State of the Union of District 16, and inform you exactly what we're doing, what our goals are, what our test scores are, and, uh, what we are doing. I mean, if you have a problem, contact your school board. These gentlemen and ladies are right. They have no, no say in what happens in the schools. Okay, so I mean, if you have a question, I'm offering the service of Dr. Williams to come in here to give you the State of the Union of District 16 to let you know what we're doing with our taxes, how we are baiting taxes, how we are saving money. We're, we're running a school. We're generating income, a school. So, again, April 29th, hope to see you there.
Thank you, Mr. Somerville.
Okay, Michael Ontiveros, once again, Glendale Heights. Uh, for clarification on number nine regarding the cricket grounds, it wasn't a motion to discuss in either way. I understand Doug said then if it's not being discussed, it's over. But for all of us residents to understand, is this dead for this year?
It could be brought back at any time by any, for any reason, so.
By whom? Would it be a trustee, would it be a?
A combination of, or what, yeah. It could be, become an, it could become an agenda item again. Doesn't mean that it will, I'm just saying that it could.
Okay. Uh, second question, or I should say not question, but a statement. If we're all going to get along, um, trustees, village president, and do a better job of representing our community, you know, please drop the lawsuit against Mr. Siddiqui. Work together, figure a common ground, you know. It doesn't help us any in this situation if we want to move forward on behalf of the residents. So just please consider that. I'm not giving any details, but just please consider it. It'd be a gesture of getting goodwill and getting along and doing what's best for our residents.
Since, uh, Mr. Ontiveros, you mentioned that, uh, I just want to assure you and the resident, I won't be smeared, or I won't be, uh, you know, be with these cheap techniques. Someone is gonna stop my voice. I will be saying what I, what it is right for the village. I'll be saying that, doesn't matter. This lawsuit is, is, is nothing, and this is a frivolous lawsuit.
Okay, well, I'm not here for specifics, but I'm just talking on behalf of us all here that we just want to show each other respect, show respect to the residents as well. I've been a victim of that myself on many occasions. I take the high road, so please do the same, and we look forward to working with you in the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mike, I really respect your opinion. I respect you, and I respect your opinion, you know.
Thank you, and I'm being very professional, as you know.
I, I cannot discuss case, you know, sorry. Uh, next.
Is there anybody else?
Anybody from public? Yes.
Up, sir.
Please state your name and address.
Hello, everyone. Uh, I'm Fuzzel Huck. I'm, uh, the Vice President of Midwest Cricket Conference. Um, I want, I, I, um, saw the announcement last board meeting about the committee's recommendation to award the three cricket fields, uh, to Midwest Cricket Conference. I think that video, I think Keith is very popular in the cricket community now. That video pretty much went viral. So, um, I think, I think there's a lot of good opportunities for us to do the right things for the community. I, I do have a couple of questions. One is, uh, there was an RFP process laid out. We took it seriously. We spent a lot of effort, a lot of resources. We got it done the right way, and, uh, the committee recommended that it be awarded to Midwest Cricket Conference based on the, I understand, a scoring system to keep it fair. I believe that's the process that the Glendale Heights adheres to for the, their high standards. But I don't know what transpired. There were negotiations called. We attended the meeting. We were asked to, we were offered Glendale Heights III for a specific dollar amount. We accepted that offer via email. We did say that since this is a two-year agreement, the first year, we will pay what you're asking for. Uh, for the first year, however, since the, since the board did not award the contract on time, we are requesting a $10,000 or, you know, a specific amount of discount because the efficiency is lost with the delayed stuff. Uh, that was a request, and then we, we were also told that if, um, if the other organization back off, and if we have an option in there that we will still take the three fields, will be considered. So we did offer again the full price. Uh, again, we said for the year one, we would like to have a discount because, um, be, because of the late awarding, because I'd see some inefficiencies in scheduling games at the last minute. So, to me, it's like, we did the right thing for the first round. We should have got the award. We did the right thing for the second round, and we're still kind of like, uh, confused what the next steps are. So I'd really appreciate if you guys could, um, you know, help us understand what is the concrete next steps. And again, don't think about Midwest or anybody, just think about our community, and let's do the right thing for the community. Also, I want to take a few, uh, 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 10 seconds to just to say, um, those who are celebrating Eid, Eid Mubarak. This is a very, uh, festival night, so to all the residents of Glendale Heights and the board and everybody who celebrate Eid Mubarak. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Uh, anybody else? Yes. Please state your name and address. Hello, everyone. Sunny Singh, uh, Business Officer for Midwest Cricket Conference, representing them. I think Fuzzel Huck has spoken about what the process we thought was fair, and, um, we followed through. We're all confused to what the next steps are, but I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Sorry, I cannot recall your name, but, uh, we're not associated at all with Midwest Cricket Club. That is just a cricket club itself. We are actually Midwest Cricket Conference. So we're not associated whatsoever with the club. Sandeep Matha, what happened in 2021, we have nothing to do with it. We are a conference. We started as a pioneer, uh, for last 50 years, everything came out of us. So, what we thought was a fair and square process, we came through it, and we did talk to the respectable committee members as well. And, um, yeah, like, we all are waiting for what the next steps are because there are actually community who will getting affected by not playing cricket, because teams are waiting for what's gonna happen, uh, from this meeting itself. So, I just want to say that, you know, we're looking for your decision makings and, uh, next steps. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes. Please state your name and address.
Eid Mubarak, Glendale Heights. So in the last meeting, there was a, the RFP was done and dusted, and and it went back to the, the committee to reevaluate, and during that reevaluation, nothing happened. So, I don't know about the future here. Good, thank you.
Chester.
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 All right. Regarding the RFP, uh, there was no motion at the time, but we'd like to bring it back up. Um, the motion died, but I need some clarification. I feel that we should just eliminate cricket for the entire season this year and put some signs up, give the parks back to the, the fields back to the residents, put some picnic vans put some picnic benches out there, and let them have it for the whole year. We'll start all over next year. I don't know how the rest of our board feels, but that's my opinion. I don't know. If you guys want to speak up, feel free to do so.
Yes. Could we bring this back up, Peter?
Well, we have one member from the public who wants to.
I really want to bring it back up because I want to get this cricket out of the way. Two years I'm listening to this cricket deal. I want to get it out of the way, so.
If we can finish with the public and then I'll guide you through bringing it back.
All right.
If somebody from the public?
There's one more individual who wanted to speak.
We have, we have some comments too.
Thank you, David.
Hello, guys. My name is Ahmad Hassan, league director for Castle Cricket League, resident of Arlington Heights. Here to whatever the procedure was set up, we followed that. A lot of teams are pending and waiting on our decision. Whichever way this goes among the three leagues, there are more than 25 teams that are willing to play on those three fields. So by just saying that we just cancel a year, it will cancel a 25 teams that will have no grounds to play. And majority of them are resident of Glendale Heights. So just to pass a motion and say that it will, it is a better option just to cancel the whole season, I think to the community, it will, it will not be fair on them because they are counting on you guys to, to use the field which is available to be used. It is not that, that you have to make the field again and, you know, spend more resources on that. Whatever we are doing here, we are bringing more revenue to the village. And those teams are paying. It is not like that, that they are not paying. And we are, they are, we just going to say to them, hey, no cricket for you guys this year. This has been dragged so long, and now at the last minute. Even whatever league takes the ground, we know for sure. It is a common understanding that those, those teams going to go to whichever leagues, a league got the ground, you know. They're going to play over there. But one thing is for sure that we assured as an organization that, hey, you guys going to be playing no matter what. But with your decision just to die down the motion or not to approve the ground to anyone, that means those teams will not have a ground to play. And that will be a sad day in cricket history for Glendale Heights and for the whole community. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else from public?
Mine's very brief. And I'm, and I'm sorry, you know, that's just clarification. We didn't get what city.
I just wanted to ask the question.
Listen, let that lady talk. You talk three times. Let ma'am come.
I was just asking what town they're from.
Please later.
They didn't state their address as far as where they're from. That's all I was asking.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
I'm sorry about that. Yes, she, yes, ma'am.
Hi, Cheryl from Fullerton Avenue. Wasn't going to speak, but cricket has been here 25, 26 years, and yet nobody cared up until now. So you want to bring in all these new villages because now you're concerned more about profit than community and the people who have run it for this long a time. So my question is, what if another town comes in and says, we want to run our fest here? Are we going to start putting Glendale Heights on a back burner because other people want to put more money in and take over? I mean, it's just a thought. Who is this cricket field for? A profit or the people in the community? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from public? Yes, Mr. Mike, you, you have. Is he done?
Okay, yeah, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so now.
Let's finish Zoom and then we can come back.
Handful of Zoom comments. One is from Mohammed Khan. How much money is being generated by these cricket fields? Any safety measures for night games at GH3 ground? Our cricket ground improvements part of the RFP. Will the money generated be these cricket contracts be used to improve the grounds and pitches? And why not have the ground been maintained by the village and rent as needed to residents? And then from Daniel Rashid, please make a decision ASAP. Other leagues are starting next week in an already short season, courtesy of Chicago weather. Please make a final decision today and close the loop. And then I have two people that would like to speak on Zoom. We will start with Kim.
Hey, guys. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
It's good to see all you guys back up there, but now I'm calling bullshit.
No, can you, can you identify yourself, please?
This is Kim Darling, 1053 Greenbrier.
Thank you, ma'am.
Vacationing in Florida at the moment, but I'll be there next week. Um, Doug, can I ask you a few questions about how many people you want to hire?
No question. Yes, comments.
I can't ask him how many people we're going to hire?
No, ma'am. Not, no.
Kim, you can ask, but he doesn't have to answer.
I don't mind answering. The board wants me to answer. I don't mind answering.
Two deputy directors, a building inspector, custodian, well, custodian's just a changeover.
But anybody to help you, Doug? Is anybody in any of that there to help you?
Well, no. Human Resource Manager, we posted for today because Nicole left.
Right, but still nobody to help you?
Correct.
Okay. You're bored. You guys got to pull something out of your rear ends and do something for us people here. Doug needs help. Get him the help he needs. The next question is.
Ms. Kim, you are in Florida. Why don't you come and help you?
I can't help Doug. I would gladly help him if I could help him. I would gladly help him, but I'm not qualified to help him. He needs qualified help. He needs somebody there to help him. What are you guys doing? Get him some help. He's going to be the one who leaves, and we're going to be screwed. And you guys aren't figuring that out yet. You can only take so much. He's the one who needs help. He needs to be added on there. Somebody needs to get some help there. My second question after I'm done. I don't give a rat's ass about cricket. Why is this not done? Why are we still fighting over this? Mr. Ontiveros, I do not agree with you that we let these fields sit for a year. Absolutely not. These people need a place to play cricket. We offered them a place to play cricket by sending them an RFP. We do not renig on that. That is not what we do as a town. That is ridiculous. You do not put all this time in and say, oh, I'm sorry, we're going to let our villagers have their property. No, that is poor business use, absolutely poor. Cricket was awarded to Midwest Cricket Conference. That is what the committee decided. What are you guys holding up? I understand you guys want so hell in there, and I personally could give a rat's ass who's playing there as long as they're paying. Our taxes are too high, guys. Remember it. Siddiqui, quit saying, I don't want to put more money on our taxpayers. Fix what we have. We have a cricket field that is for rent. We have a golf course that should have been used all these years, all that money we've wasted. Figure it out and do something for us as taxpayers. My rant is over.
Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have Syed who would like to speak.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
All right. First of all, honorable mayor, respectable board members.
Did he give his name and address?
Yeah. My name is Hamid Syed, and I'm a resident of Glendale Heights. And, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sad to hear when you guys said that there's not going to be any cricket being played this year. It's pretty sad to hear that. And to be honest, like, I didn't expect this from the board because everybody has been putting their time in, right? Not just from Glendale Heights community, but, you know, all the cricket fans, cricket lovers who have been, you know, waiting for this summer to, you know, be out and, you know, have some good time with the families, with everybody, to have some fun and to have some cricket, to have some sports in their life. Because, you know, I mean, these are, the cricket is such a sport that can be played only in summer. It's an outdoor sport. So everybody was looking forward to that. And to be honest, I'm so, so, so unhappy, so depressed, you know, to hear this kind of, you know, decision from you guys that there's no cricket going to be played this year at all. I mean, I don't know how you guys made that decision, whether it was a unanimous decision or a decision taken by one person. You guys said it so easily, but you guys are not understanding the sentiments that all the passionate cricketers have, you know, behind the sports. And I don't know what to say. To be honest, I'm, I'm really, really sad. And like, you know, Sunny Singh said, it's going to be the dark day for the cricket, you know, if this is going to go into effect. I would like you guys to think through, you know, the time that everybody has given to respect that and come up with a decision. It's, you know, it's not just about one or two people who's going to, who's recommending this thing. It's, it's about the entire cricket teams. You know, we are talking about like 200 cricket players, you know, who are looking forward to this tournament, who have been waiting the entire year from last year because, you know, it has been in dilemma right from the start. Since, since the time we have been started thinking about who's going to get the ground, how much money, you know, city is going to generate and all this thing. We don't care about all this thing. We, what we want is we want to play cricket. And we want, we are requesting you to please have the, the games, you know, being held this year, you know. Please, it's my humble request. No matter what happens, we want the cricket to be played this year. And, you know, if that doesn't happen, then, you know, I guess, you know, we, we, we are going to do something that's not going to be good for the Glendale Heights community or, you know, for the entire cricket. So we, we want this to happen. So please make this happen. This is a humble request, not just from me. I'm speaking on behalf of the entire cricket fraternity. You know, please approve this thing, and it has already been so late. By this time, like, like they said, the schedule should have been out. But we are in such a dilemma that nobody even knows who's going to get the ground. And I'm surprised to hear at the last minute, you know, to find out that there's no going to, there's no cricket going to be played. So please, I would like you to think about it again and revert to your decision and then have the cricket being played. Doesn't, doesn't matter who it goes to. We want the cricket to be played. That's all. That's all I want to say.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Yeah, we have one more.
Okay.
Good evening, all of you. This is Rangarajan from Schaumburg. I just wanted to reiterate what others spoke about the handing over the cricket grounds. My understanding is there should have been due diligence done before the RFP was floated. There was a reason for the RFP and all other stuff. So we are all working professionals. We have spent considerable amount of time going through the various aspects of the RFP, the commercial aspects of it, how to develop the grounds. And a whole lot of effort has gone in. All of us have worked after the office hours to respond to the RFP. We were waiting for a fair decision. Midwest was awarded. And then from then on, we don't know what's happening behind the scenes. Now somebody is even talking about, let's just keep the whole grounds free for the entire year. I don't know what logic is that. And then these are all not about, the cricket is one of the, Glendale Heights is one of the iconic grounds in the Chicagoland region. Anybody who plays cricket would have played in Glendale Heights. And also keeping the commercials in mind, $100,000 for a year is not something that you can just afford to go waste by just letting the grounds not be used. So once again, request everybody in charge, the powers to be, to make a decision in the interest of the cricket and also keeping in mind the long-term vision of growing the cricket in the Chicagoland region. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, we have one written comment from Ahmed Syed. We have been playing cricket here since the last five years. We've been waiting the whole year to enjoy the season 2023. Hundreds of players. Please kindly make the decision and let the hundreds of people waiting chance to enjoy cricket summer 2023. And then we have one more that commented, we played here 20 years under leadership Sohil Bari. The other leagues have their own contracts with other cities, did not give out grounds to other leagues. They're honoring them. Why can't your, why can't you honor your taxpayer, Sohil Bari, who is legally paying for use of grounds and taxes? And then I've got one person on Zoom who would also like to speak.
David, is there anybody else on Zoom now?
Yes.
Besides this person?
Uh, yeah, we have 32-ish people. Yeah, but, but they, but they don't all want to speak.
We have one more comment from Zoom, and then we're cutting Zoom comments off because it's repeated. It's all repeating. Sir, you have a comment on Zoom? Who is it?
Daniel Rashid.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to say that this is extremely disappointing that, you know, at this time, when we were expecting a decision to be made, we are being told that the league is not going to be played in Glendale Heights. I mean, we, we work really hard offseason. We kind of put in our times and efforts, kind of work, getting sponsors, getting players. We set up meetings. We practice indoor to be prepared for the season. At the last minute, we're being told that there will be no cricket. I think this is really disappointing and really unprofessional from the village to just tell us last minute that there will be no cricket. I want the village to reconsider the decision because we want to play cricket. Thank you.
Anybody else?
All right, trustee Maritato, you asked about re, bringing up agenda item number nine. The motion was not advanced, so it's considered a denial. So at this point, if you wanted to bring it back up, it's appropriate to bring, to make a motion to reconsider agenda item number nine, which is a motion to approve the recommendation of the Glendale Heights Ad-Hoc Cricket Evaluation Committee. If somebody makes that motion, it would be seconded, and then you would need a roll call vote.
Okay, I make a motion to.
Reconsider.
Bring it back.
To reconsider the motion.
Consider the motion.
I'll second it.
There's a second. Any discussion?
Discussion, yeah. All right.
I feel that we should just eliminate cricket this year. We've been going back and forth.
Well, this is just, this is just to reconsider it, not, not the actual topic itself.
Second, we need a, we need a roll call.
Roll call vote, yes.
Okay.
Our discussion?
Well, no, it's just a roll call vote. It's just to reconsider it.
Roll call vote.
Sorry, I wasn't ready for this. Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light?
Yes.
Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
Trustee Pajak?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
And then if I could, before the board starts discussing it, I think we should hear first what the recommendation is, and then we could open up the discussion. So then I would ask, is it Keith? Are you doing this one?
So are you looking for the second recommendation? Because the first one was discussed at the last meeting. We went back to the groups. Okay, so. Sorry, I got to find it now. So the recommendation that was proposed by the Cricket Committee was to reject all RFP proposals and move forward the Cricket Committee's new recommendation to hold a draft for cricket fields for the 2023 cricket season in a manner that is put into the packet with different days having different dollar amounts and different times.
Are we open for discussion now?
I mean.
Well, old questions, correct.
Okay.
That was the recommend, recommendation of the committee is to do that.
When you say committee, were the board members there? Did you get their consent, like Chester and, and Mr. Pajak? Oh, sorry, Mr. Pajak and Mary Schroder?
The board members were not present.
So how come you say that this is a part of the committee? Because when they never gave you any consent, who made these proposals and all this?
The committee members that were present made the recommendation.
And why they were not present? So if they are not present, you guys just made the proposal and then you bring it here?
So they weren't present. We had a quorum with three of the five members there. They weren't available to make the meeting dates that we had. So we went with the meetings because we had meetings set up with the cricket vendors, for lack of a better term. And we had a meet on those days, and trustees were not available at the times that the cricket vendors were ready to, were able to.
And we had a meet on those days and trustees were not available at the times that the cricket vendors were ready to, were able to meet.
Okay, Peter, do we need a motion to make, have this discussion?
Unless, the, the questions are being directed to Keith, I think it's, it's okay. And then if, if they wanted, somebody wanted to advance the motion to accept the recommendation, that would be that or a motion to deny the recommendation.
I think Pat is.
Kate?
Yes.
What did I hear about putting bleachers out there?
So.
Was that in your discussion?
In the second, so that was in some of the RFP proposals to have that.
Okay.
That's not.
Which the board didn't know nothing about, but go ahead.
That's not a part of the recommendation.
And how about moving the hill, taking the hill out and putting seed, putting grass?
That is not a part of any recommendation.
And how about putting a nut because they play with a hard ball? And we have to put a nut on the third, on the third court? So the kids in the playground don't get hit in the head with a hard ball?
That is part of the recommendation that was put forth and until the hard ball, which has been played in the past, until that is done, it would be a hard tennis ball.
Well, you, you know, here, here's what I'm thinking. I need four votes. I want to give the park back to the residents for this summer. Absolutely no cricket in Campbell Park this year. I have some ideas, I'm gonna run by the park department. I have some plans maybe for this summer for the residents to enjoy their park on the weekends. So I don't know how the board feels, but I'm, I'm, I'm looking for four, four votes to say that there's no cricket this year in Campbell Park.
Is there a motion, discussion, is it still, you know?
I'll make a motion, that is a motion.
It's not, it's not an agenda item, so I, I wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to vote on it. You could make a motion to disapprove of the recommendation and then it would die at that point again. And probably next meeting, we would bring back an ordinance to, an ordinance to reject all bids.
Peter?
Can we do this at this meeting?
Could a mo?
No.
One by one, please. Could a motion be made to the committee's recommendation here? And then amended to remove the season?
No, because it's not, it, it, that's the committee's recommendation, that, that you can't change the recommendation. But you could not accept the recommendation. And by you not accepting the recommendation, you're, it would almost be that you're not going to approve cricket. Because we would reject all bids at the next meeting. And that means that there's no bids out there and there's no cricket really to speak of being played until the board either moves one direction or the other.
Peter, what you're saying is we can't do too much this week, but the next meeting, we can finalize it, period.
Well, next week, we, the, the next meeting, we would, we would reject all bids. And that means that there's no cricket to be decided on.
Okay.
I, I just want to find out how the board feels and what I said. I mean, could we take, could we take a?
You could pull, you could pull the board, you could pull the board. Yeah, you can make a motion to, to pull the board on their feelings.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yep.
Mike?
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Mary?
I'll go along with you.
Okay, so, so.
Can I, can I say something, Pat, before you? This is a very sad day for the people of Glendale Heights and especially for a person who is sitting here, who this mayor has been calling my relative and yes, I am related to him. But this is not about the relationship, this is just about a beautiful game which he brought up here. He brought up this game, cricket, to Village of Glendale Heights when no one knows about this. And I'm talking about the twenty years of hard working. And I believe a lot of people like you who are sitting here, they agreed with me. The, the hard work done by Mr. Bari, the, the, the good name he advertised about the Village of Glendale Heights. Village of Glendale Heights name has been published in Pakistani newspaper. And when people call about Illinois, they know where the Glendale Heights is. The, the film stars of Pakistan, the film stars of India, they come here, they played the cricket. And this all good work was just get under, get under the rug by just one person who on the very first day when he come to the office, he asked Mr. Keith and Mr. Mike Maron, told me this, I want to cancel this cricket. Because he has a personal vendetta against Mr. Bari. Whenever, and this is the fourth injury to this village, the third, there are three, the employees left because they could not hold his, his, his things down. This thing is done and I would just say that the board had enough and I, I can understand all the board members, you know, that how they are feeling by stringing it. But how we come up to this point? Because every board meeting, this guy just want to give this field to his people. He has a personal vendetta against Mr. Bari and that's what he want. And now he's, gets succeed in doing that. So congratulations, Mr. Coker, on doing that, that's all I have to say.
Please never come on my personally.
I don't want to talk.
You are in litigation and I, this is warning.
Whatever, you, you can put me so many lawsuits, yes, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you very much.
Because the, go ahead, whatever you are doing, you can do whatever you want, but you are ruining this city. You are ruining this city by tits and b, it's, it's, it's unbearable for me just to stay quiet.
Done?
Okay, at this time, there's a motion to approve.
Let me speak. Number one, I, I am in favor of letting this, these grounds to someone who is fair, hybrid and good package for the player and resident. I am in favor of that and I will talk with my trustees in one-on-one and with all these people. Is, these people, they control, you know, I don't control, you know. But I will talk with these people, it's open discussion. It's not one man, I'm not against anybody, I'm, I'm not favoring anybody. If somebody, you know, is higher bidder, good package for the resident and the player, yes, he or she should get, you know.
Justice.
Yes. I got one thing to say, Mr. Coker. We took a little poll right now, all were against you. And I told you before, the trustees run the village. You got your answer when we took a poll about ten minutes ago. So I don't know what you're talking about now. Thank you.
You are angry person.
I'm not angry, I love you, I love you to death.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm lying too.
I, I love you too. Okay, okay, that's good, you know.
We love each other.
All right, so the, a motion to approve the recommendation of the Glendale Heights Ad-Hoc Cricket Evaluation Committee was brought back to be reconsidered. If no one makes a motion to advance this, then it would also die now. So unless there's a motion to approve, this agenda item would die.
I need a motion, roll call?
Well, there's no motion yet, so.
There's no motion.
So it dies?
Yeah, so if there's no motion, then the motion dies. So then we've already had public discussion, there's no executive session, there would be a motion to adjourn.
Let me explain that, you know, my trustee, not everybody, but some people, they are angry because their relative is not getting contracts, so they want to. They don't like, you know, contract.
Motion to adjourn?
That's because you can't get anything done.
There's a motion, there's a motion been made.
Okay.
There's a motion on the floor?
There is.
You need a second.
Yeah.
Is there a second to adjourn?
Mr. Schmidt's second?
I can ask, you know.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Listen, I'm cheering, you can ask, you know, motion for adjournment.
Are you using these?
No.
Okay. Executive session, there is none. Is there a motion to adjourn? Trustee Light and trustee Pojek?
Second.
And.
Can just be all in favor?
Roll call vote, please.
Well, you can do roll call.
Trustee Pojek?
Yes.
Trustee Schroder?
Yes.
Trustee Schmidt?
Yes.
Trustee Siddiqui?
Yes.
Trustee Light? Trustee Maritato?
Yes.
And this board meeting is adjourned.